I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert, you do the roll call, please.
Mayor Steem, Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
We need a motion for adoption of the agenda with additions. There is one addition to A, summary of our closed meeting. With those additions, we need a motion.
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
And twenty-three, twenty-four. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
On paper.
Aye.
I oppose. Uh, motion two is approving minutes from March 2nd, 2020. Need a motion? So move.
Second.
On paper.
Aye.
I oppose. Two A, Mr. Byram.
Uh, thank you. Earlier today, we had a closed meeting for the purpose of uh preliminary information relating to performance evaluation of an employee. The employee is Craig Clark, city administrator. Uh, I believe the last uh performance evaluation was in the summer of 2018. Uh, the council generally discussed Mr. Clark and gave some guidance as to both the format and pace uh of the intended performance evaluation, which will be concluded at some point in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, three, uh, recognitions and awards. I don't believe we have anything. Under four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. On paper.
Aye.
Opposed. Five, under public hearings. Five is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for 10th Street Northeast, Oakland Place Southeast to Second Avenue Northeast, and Fourth Street Southwest, Oakland Avenue West to First Avenue Southwest. Project two, zero, one, zero, one. The amount to be assessed is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seven cents at four percent interest for fifteen years. Steven.
For the next four items, um, we went through a presentation at the February 18th meeting detailing uh how we came about these costs, what's gonna happen on the street projects. So I have that information with me if anyone has any questions about it, but we don't plan on on going through those presentations again. Uh, but some questions, one one item that has uh come up a couple times is how do we apply um state grants uh when there is a a state aid roadway and a and a roadway is eligible for state grants? How do we, how do we apply that to the assessments? And the way we do that is a very uh community-wide approach. We have set assessment rates. So whether you live in the northeast or the southwest or any quadrant, you're assessed the same amount uh based on the frontage of your lot. And so so we look at it from a community-wide standpoint when it comes to assessments, trying to keep, treat everyone equally. We don't assess different amounts based on different areas. Uh, and then we apply that same theory when it comes to grants. Um, we, we take grants and we put that in the entire pool of money and and it helps lower everyone's assessment rate, not just those people that are on that roadway that is eligible for a state grant. And the reason we look at that is because should uh someone on one roadway have to pay less of an assessment because their roadway is eligible for a grant, when someone in another neighborhood, then uh their roadway is not eligible for a grant, and therefore they would then get a higher assessment. So again, we're trying to apply uh even consistency throughout the city, and uh we work that very closely with our finance department when it comes to grants and assessment rates and uh treating our constituents uh equally um across the city. So that is one question that has come up. So with that, um, I will turn it over to the mayor, or if anyone has any questions for me about this project.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on five? If not, we need, I believe there are resolution for declaring the cost?
Uh, no, just right through each, each A, B, C, D, all the way down.
Presentation of the project and associate assignment. Now, we need to put that to the council?
That was just done. So now we need B.
Okay, motion to adjourn and continue the hearing on the properties for which written objections to the assessment have been filed.
Letter B first.
Item B.
Call for written objections, Your Honor.
Call for written objections. Are there any written objections?
I have not received any written objections on this project.
Okay, then what I just said for C. Motion two. Okay. D, resolution declaring the cost. We've done that, and we need a resolution adopting the assessment.
Uh, sir, this is a, this is a public hearing, so after calling for any written objections, we should probably open it up to the audience for any obje- any comments.
Is there anybody here that came tonight to discuss, wants to give the council some input on this project? Are you here to input on a project that we're having, or?
Just the assessment stuff.
The assessment?
Which project?
Not any particular.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, if there is none, then we need a resolution declaring the cost?
Yes, sir.
Is there a resolution? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
We need a resolution adopting the assessment role. So move. Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Uh, I think this got, I have this down. My mind is wandering a little bit today. I apologize. Six, a public hearing on street improvement assessment for Fifth Street Southwest, First Avenue to Fifth Avenue Southwest, Second Avenue Southwest, Fourth Street to Sixth Street Southwest, and Seventh Street Southwest, Fourth Avenue to Fifth Avenue Southwest. Project two, zero, one, zero, two. The amount to be assessed is one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and six cents at four percent for fifteen years. Steven.
Again, for item A, uh, we did the presentation on February 18th, and I'd be willing to, nothing has changed since then. I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any written objections?
No, we have not received any written objections.
Okay, we need, is it, well, we don't need a motion. Um, public hearing, yes, ma'am. Why don't you step up here to the podium? Give us your name and your address. If you're together, you can both go up there if you want. That's right, let her talk. I'm sorry, you, your name and address?
Patricia Woodhouse, twelve oh five Ninth Street Northwest. I know it's not going to be assessed quite yet, but it soon will be. Um, we have a written objection as to the general um assessments. We object to payment interest rate, which is too high, and payment options, which are too few.
Okay, what would you, Steven?
Um, okay, so we will, Mr. Byram, do you want to first uh address the written objection? I can address the questions.
Well, I think first, I I just want to make the comment that tonight we're considering uh specific projects that impact specific landowners uh whose opportunity it is to come in and actually object to the specifics of how this impacts them. You know, you, public comment, it is a public meeting, so there, you can make a comment if you just generally, I guess, think that the process is flawed. Uh, that might be in, in a, uh, you know, comments from the uh, from the community later in the agenda, or it certainly would be i- if and when there's a project that impacts your property, you'll be given notice, and that would be a perfect time to come in and and discuss the specifics. So if you want to make a a very quick comment, which I think you already have done, which you think the interest rates are are too high and the options are too few, uh, if if there's something very quick that you wanted to add beyond that, but tonight's really a public meeting just about the specific project and those landowners who are, who are impacted.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Um, so is there anybody else that wants to talk to council or give some input on this project? If not, we need a resolution declaring the cost. Is there a motion for a resolution? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We no need a resolution adopting the assessment role. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, seven. Public hearing on street improvement assessment for Fifth Avenue Northeast, Oakland Place Northeast to Nineteenth Street Northeast, project two, zero, one, zero, three. The amount to be accessed is assessed is one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars, sixty-seven cents at four percent for fifteen years. Mr. Lang.
Again, for item A, we have no changes since our previous presentation, and I'd be open to answer any questions that have come up since February 18th.
Are there any written objections?
No, we have not received any written objections.
If not, um, anybody here talk to council on this project? It's a public hearing. You wanna hear from me if you have something to say. Don't be afraid. Otherwise, we need a resol- resolution declaring the cost. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
E, we need a resolution adopting the assessment role. So move. Resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eight is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for Seventh Street Northwest, Eighth Avenue Northwest to Thirteenth Avenue Northwest, and Ninth Avenue Northwest, Fourth Street Northwest to Eighth Street Northwest, project two, zero, one, zero, five. The amount to be assessed is two hundred and, two hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents at four percent for fifteen years. Mr. Lang.
Again, for this project, we have uh, presentation is the same, and we have no changes since our uh, February fifteenth, February 18th meeting.
Written objections?
No written objections.
Okay, anybody here to discuss this project with council? If not, we need a resolution declaring the cost. So move the resolution. Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. E is, we need a resolution adopting the assessment role. So move.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number nine is a resolution under bid opening and award receiving bids for Todd Park Lift Station removal. Mr. Lang.
This is a project that we are looking to upgrade our sewer system out at the Todd Park softball conflict, complex, and also the Isaac Walton Cabin. Uh, we took bids on the project. Hodgman Drainage was low at ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, budget for this is coming out of two different funds, but our estimate was a hundred thousand dollars, and it is below our our budget number for this project, so we'd recommend awarding the bid to Hodgman Drainage Company.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution awarding the bid. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, number ten is a resolution approving a DNR acquisition flood grant agreement. Mr. Lang.
We previously talked about acquiring a home for flood acquisition, and this is the, the home is located on South Main Street. I believe it's 509 South Main. Yes, 509 South Main. And uh, this resolution is what we need to include with our grant application, and we would request approval.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Otherwise, we need a resolution for ten.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution approving budget adjustment number one, 2019 budget carryovers. Mr. Dankert.
Uh, counsel, we've uh received the request back from the different departments regarding items that have been approved for the 2019 budget to be expended that did not get expended for one reason or another. In order to authorize them in the 2020 budget, council just needs to make a budget amendment to the, to allow them to purchase those items using fund balance or the funds they didn't use yet, use last year in order to finance those projects. In the general fund, it's about five hundred and seventy-six thousand worth of projects. In the capital improvement revolving fund, it's four hundred and fifteen thousand of projects. And in the central garage, it's five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of projects. And I request council approve a resolution if they so desire, so that then those budgets can be amended and the acquisitions made.
Questions, comments?
Tom, if we don't approve it, essentially it just shifts everything back a year and/or there's, we can't do the projects, right?
Correct. Those items would then not be approved. The money would be sitting in fund balance there, and then if staff wanted to go forward with them in 2021, they'd have to ask for the funds then.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for eleven.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution approving a budget adjustment number two, amending the general and capital improvement revolving funds. Mr. Dankert.
Similar to the last one, budget uh amendment number two would, in essence, take care of the Hormel Foundation grants for 2020 that the city of Austin received. In essence, it just um increases the expenditure line item, but also increases uh, in essence, contributions coming forward. So with that, we would request council approve budget adjustment number two.
Counsel, questions or comments? If there are none, we need a resolution for number twelve. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution authorizing the call of certain outstanding taxable general obligation utility revenue bonds, huh?
In 2010, the city of Austin issued two million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of bonds for the annexation of Lansing Township area. Uh, those bonds had interest rates ranging anywhere from one percent to four point seven per, five percent at maturity in 2026. Uh, those bonds also have a thirty-five, had a thirty-five percent rebate from the federal government as part of the Build America program. However, in the last couple years, the federal government, because of some budget deficit act, has reduced that thirty-five percent reimbursement to the city by anywhere from five to nine percent. By them doing that, that would allow the city, if we, if we so choose, to actually call or prepay the bonds earlier than 2022, as was in the bond prospectus when we issued the bonds. Because the federal government reduced the reimbursement rate, that gives us an out if we want to call the bonds. And these days, with all of our investments being called because of interest rates and the coronavirus knocking down to zero, we've requested uh council approve a resolution, as we worked with our bond council, to authorize us to pay off those bonds with the cash we have. Again, I've got adequate cash because of our investments being called. That way, we can alleviate some of the higher interest rates down the road. Is it massive savings? That's probably a hundred thousand dollars over the remaining seven years, but it's, you know, better than a kick in the teeth. So any little dollars we can find, we'd certainly accept them.
Counsel, anything? I thank you, Tom, for coming up with this stuff.
Is there an opportunity, even beyond this, I mean, with interest rates being zero, are we looking at refinancing other things? Are there opportunities to do that?
We've only got, the city of Austin, after this is paid off, only has two bond issues left that I recall. One is a tax increment bond issue for which certain parcels are paying taxes that we use to pay those bonds off. We called those, and we don't have adequate cash to call them early. So if we wanted to use existing city cash to call them, we could, but that takes away our fund balance money, and those specific parcels are then relieved from paying the increments wholly to us, and they just go into the general pool to pay school, city, and county taxes. So we keep that one out there just because it's specifically related to a couple parcels that are paying the increments for improvements within that parcel. The other one we have outstanding is a bond issue um with Hormel, the, for one of the treatment plant improvements, but that's paid off in 2021. So there's literally like, you know, twenty months left on that bond issue, and the issuance cost to call those sort of bonds, you know, it's a couple thousand bucks, so at this point in time, um, those are the only two we have. Now, on the utility side, they have two large bond issues that flow through the city. One is the central facility, and one is the water tower out at their um facility. But none of those bonds are callable at this point in time, and none of them have the provision in there that allows for early call features if the federal government does whatever they want to do. So it could be several years before they could pay those bonds off or pay them down and try to refinance them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. If there's no more questions, we need a resolution for thirteen. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Fourteen is a motion setting the annual electronics recycling event for May ninth, 2020. Steven?
Yes, this year again, we are going to be working with retrofit companies out of Owatonna and working closely with the Moore County Public Works Department and also the fairgrounds for the location of the site. Um, costs as in the past are the same for drop-off materials. And except for TVs, computer monitors, and flat screens have gone up from ten dollars to fifteen dollars. So there has been one increase. Um, but otherwise, they're holding constant with their rates for drop-off of electronic materials. Uh, as you indicated, the event is to be held uh second Saturday in May, which is May ninth, and it is open to the public from nine AM until two PM. It's been a very successful event for us since 2011. We've had one every year, and there continues to be um recycling products that continue to show up. So with that, um, we are requesting the ability to use five hundred dollars for advertising from our transfer station fund, and the city of Austin will supply a forklift for the event, as we have in the past. And otherwise, we are also looking for volunteers. We typically break it up into two shifts. First shift is from eight-thirty to eleven, and then the second shift is from eleven until two-thirty. Gives us a little bit of an early start ahead of to get set up and a little bit of cleanup afterwards. And it would be great if anyone is interested, if they're interested in volunteering, they could call the administrative office, and they are helping us to coordinate volunteers. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, anything? Do we have these uh rates listed somewhere on the, so people can know them coming in?
We have a flyer that uh we will put out on Facebook and get posted around. And then at the entrance to, on Fourth Avenue to the fairgrounds, we also have the rates posted there, so as people are driving up, they can see what the rates are.
Okay, great. Um, counsel, anything? If not, we need a motion.
Are you gonna have to adjust the event because of COVID-19 in any way? Or do you feel like it's, with the drive-through aspect of it, it meets all the requirements? I just know it's within the eight weeks that a lot of us are looking at.
Yeah, as, that'll be something we'll address as it gets closer.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, we need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Opposed. Fifteen is a resolution approving a DNR grant application for Cedar River Dam portages. Kevin.
As the notes indicate here, I'm completing an application with the assistance of a individual from soil and water conservation, as well as some information that Stephen had compiled a few years ago, looking to get some bonding dollars, and hoping we can be successful with this grant application. As a part of that, the resolution is a necessary part.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution. So move the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Sixteen is a motion appointing Obala Obala. There he is. As the next honorary council member, May through July 2020. Any questions? If not, we need a motion. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Opposed. Obala, you made it.
Thank you.
Hundred percent.
Not about objecting, but, you know, I didn't want that on the record.
Okay, seventeen is a motion approving the city of Austin act, act as a fiscal agent for the Culture and Arts Commission. Holly.
Uh, the Culture and Arts Commission is requesting the city be their fiscal agent for 2020 and to be renewed annually or as otherwise required. Uh, the city has the same arrangement with the community band. Um, basically, we'll just help facilitate uh application and receipt of grant funds.
Counsel, if there's nothing, we need a motion. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Opposed. Eighteen is a resolution adopting fees for zoning compliance letters. Holly?
Uh, I am proposing that we add some fees for uh issuing zoning compliance letters in the planning and zoning department. Uh, the uh proposed amounts are thirty dollars for residential property, a hundred dollars for commercial property, and for rush, uh, two-day rush, additional twenty dollars. Um, compliance letters are typically associated with uh refinancing or purchase of property, um, and they're typically requested from title companies, attorney's offices, um, finance companies. Um, we are probably um unusual in that we do not charge a fee at this time. Um, I get asked all the time, and uh it does take uh some effort to put these together, and um it seems reasonable to me.
What's the rush fee? The twenty dollars extra for a rush fee?
Um, it's just a, you know, if, if somebody wants it with a two-day turnaround, we'll
So that's on the
Essentially like a convenience fee or a
But that would be up to them, not us.
Yeah, that would be up to them, certainly. If it's worth it to them to add the extra cost, or, you know, cost into their
Counsel, anything, any additions or questions? If not, we need a resolution for eighteen. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nineteen is a motion reviewing a variance request from Shannon Shuey. Holly?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Shuey is here if you have any questions. Um, and so at the March 12th, 2018, or twenty, whoops. March 12th. That was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Um, so actually, it was at our last meeting, 2020, of the Austin Planning Commission. The commission reviewed a request from Shannon Shuey for variance from the requirements of our code regarding square footage of accessory structures. The petitioner wants to put in a second garage that would exceed our square footage limits by 400 square feet. His lack coverage would be less than the allowed coverage of 40%. And his, his property is almost two acres. The planning commission, with eight members present, recommended approving the variance eight to zero. The recommendation came with the following findings, that the request, requested variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. This use is residential. The variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is located. In this instance, the structures are not easily visible from the road due to topography. And the garage would be traditional stick-built and match existing structures.
Ms. Shuey here? With Mr. Shuey. Okay, you have the right to address the council if you so choose. I think it'll go pretty smoothly for you though, so, you know, unless there's questions. Council, do we have any questions on this? If not, we need a motion to approve or deny.
So move the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed. Thank you. Now, we're at twenty is a resolution declaring the property at 906 Thirteenth Avenue Northeast, a hazardous structure. I'm sorry, who's it? Holly, is this your again?
Yeah, this property was given notice September 13th, 2019, to make certain repairs. Those repairs were not made. The property is vacant and there's been some talk about potentially somebody renovating the property, but it is in very bad condition. This is over in the Crane Chapel area.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, do you have any specific questions?
If there are none, we need a resolution for twenty.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Twenty-one is a resolution declaring the property at 904 Thirteenth Avenue Northeast, a hazardous structure. This one must've got sick from the one next to it.
Yeah, that happens actually, with hazardous structures. Um, the property here has been a nuisance for many years. The police department's gotten many calls about this particular property. It's unsecured. It's open to trespass. Primarily, we want to secure the property, but we're waiting for this to come up from tax forfeiture. The, the structure is not to the point where we would tear it down. So this, this item is about just securing. The landlord is nowhere to be found and appears to have abandoned the property.
Council, any questions? If not, we need a...
Oh, I shouldn't say landlord. It's vacant, so the property owner.
So it's a, in the picture, there's a home and a garage. Are they both, are we declaring both of them hazardous structures?
Uh, the accessory structures are included with the house or the primary, primary structure.
Thank you.
Any more questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Twenty-two is a series of motions granting the planning and zoning department authorization to remove junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location. A, 812 Oakland Avenue East Affordable Rentals Property. Need a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? On favor?
Aye.
Posed. B, 503 Eighth Avenue Southeast Wakefield Property. Need a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
And I just want you all to know that that one was already cleaned up because of the, because it was actually bags of refuse, massive pile. So we have the ability to clean it up if it's a health hazard.
So we're done?
And then just report it to council. Yeah.
Okay. Did we finish that? Tom, we're done with that with B?
I have a motion and a second if we have...
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. C, 504 Eighteenth Street Southeast Anderson Property. Need a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And finally, D, 201 Third Street Southwest Pizano Property. We need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Twenty-three is a resolution approving temporary relief from certain policies and procedures during the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members, we're trying to be as responsive as we can to the COVID-19 issue. Before you tonight is a resolution authorizing us to proceed forward with the pandemic plan that we have included in the packet. To give you a sense of what we're trying to do, I have included a letter that we sent out to media and put on our Facebook page that lists some of the things. We're planning to allow employees to go negative in their sick leave balance, establishing a pool for donated time for sick leave, or proposing to close the nature center buildings, the library and the arenas from March 18th through the 29th. We're making adjustments to the city hall workplace and reducing unnecessary meetings. We're cognizant that we want to do our part in protecting both the public and city employees from the outbreak as much as we can and doing everything we can as well as doing proper hygiene and cleaning and those sorts of things. We anticipate it being on a temporary basis, but we don't know what the end of this might, might be. We also had an inquiry about our ability to use electronic means for council meetings. We've looked into that. Mr. Byram can certainly give some further background on that if you'd like. Otherwise, the police chief is our emergency management director and I can offer, have him provide any additional comments. Otherwise, we'd need approval of the resolution included in the packet. David?
I would only comment that we have been looking at this situation for the last three to four weeks. Our primary concerns are, one, continuing to provide city services. We can best do that by ensuring the health of our employees first and foremost. The second is, any spaces in our buildings that the public is going to use, make sure those are sanitary. And in cases where we can control access or distances, do that. In some cases, you may have to temporarily close those facilities. Governor Walz did just issue another executive order. I haven't had time to digest it completely, but starting tomorrow at five o'clock and running through the 27th, it does look like a fairly comprehensive closing of restaurants, food courts, bars, taverns, theaters, cinemas, gymnasiums, country clubs, amusement parks. There's, there's a whole list here within his executive order that have been ordered to be closed in the state of Minnesota. And again, that just happened at 5:30. So this is an evolving issue. We want to be mindful that our supply chains are in great shape. Things are, for most of the public, we need you to go to work. We need you to do the things that you can accomplish. However, because we have incredibly vulnerable populations and because we have a certain capacity to our healthcare system, social distancing and these measures are all about slowing the spread of this disease to ensure that the capacity of our healthcare systems can treat everyone that comes in. We want to avoid a scenario where we have more patients than we have capacity to treat them. These are extraordinary measures in anyone's lifetime, but it's really about slowing this spread down. We've seen it throughout the world that if, if we can't, we exceed our capacity. These measures here are hopefully going to slow it and not allow that to happen. Everything right now, schools, these closures run through the 27th. But I would anticipate potentially extending beyond that. We'll just have to see where, where we're at as a nation. He did announce some other things related to unemployment benefits, et cetera, in an emergency standpoint related to this current order, but I have not had an opportunity to read through that yet.
Thank you. Um, council? Has there been, if we close these facilities, is there any accommodation made for employees that maybe... We're, that's something we're gonna be discussing later. We've talked about it some and we're gonna put some proposals at some point in front of council. Just how we're gonna, how we're gonna do it.
At this point, they would still report to work.
Yeah.
And so they'll just be doing other things without the interaction with the public.
As of for the next, at least the next week, I know we're gonna meet every Monday on this. At least for the next week, we can look at this on a weekly basis, you know, see what other places are doing. But we've talked about different approaches for it, which are, you know, so that people don't suffer as little as possible.
And I would add that we do have good, good and existing partnerships with the sheriff's department, with the Moore County Department of Public Health, which is really the, the lead in disaster, so to speak, such as this. Moore County Emergency Management, our schools, both Pacelli and the Austin Public Schools. Again, we've all been in communication, including over this weekend, to ensure despite the, the large-scale nature of these changes, that we're all working together to do what we can to serve the citizens of Austin.
And I think we need to tell people that we have competent people in all of our positions. We're preparing, we're preparing for absolutely the worst that could happen and hoping for the best. But as bad as it gets, we don't want to get, we're not gonna get caught by surprise. So we're preparing some worst-case scenarios right now. We want to be as ready as we can for it. We owe that to our citizens. Okay, anybody else on twenty-three? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Twenty-four is a resolution authorizing employees in the UAW Local 867 Austin Parks Department to participate in the Minnesota State Retirement System Healthcare Savings Plan and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract addendum. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members, this is a request from UAW Local 867. This was voted on by their group to change their contributions to the Minnesota State Retirement Healthcare Savings Plan. This is at no cost to the city. Council action is requested to approve the addendum and authorize the signatures.
Any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for twenty-four. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert. Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Are there any citizens here tonight that wish to address the council on anything? If it was on the agenda or not. You want to talk to the council, it's time to do it. Otherwise, council, we'll start with Paul.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Just wanted to say thank you to Chief McGeekin and the police department. Had the opportunity to do a ride-along on Friday night. You guys obviously do vitally important work and it was an honor to see the tremendous commitment that your team has and good collaborative relationship up front, so.
Okay, Laura?
Um, I wore my We Are Austin t-shirt tonight because the, this COVID-19 situation is really a time when we all have to pull together and look out for each other. I know at my house, in my workplace, there's been a lot of anxiety and a lot of just shaking of the head to try and keep up with all the changes and all the recommendations. And here came another one at 5:30 that'll affect us. So I just want, I, I already see signs of that everywhere I go. I hear people talking about their plans and they're being creative and, and we'll get through it together. But I know I can count on Austin to do that and I wanted to say that tonight.
Thank you, Laura. Jeff?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Rebecca?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor. Craig?
Uh, yes, we had the opportunity to go to Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day. I thought that went well. We were able to provide testimony on a housing bill that would increase funds for greater Minnesota housing projects and adjust the project cost to accommodate prevailing wage. We also had a letter of support for a TIF provision that would provide more flexibility in how the TIF law is administered and when the property, the structure is demolished. We did also meet with MPC Commissioner Dana Vanderwosch with the Division of Water and had a good discussion with her and staff in regards to our $19 million bonding request, as well as we met with Senator Kent, who's the minority leader in the Senate. So she has a fundamental role in the bonding process. So we wanted to share with her our wastewater project and she had positive things to say. So I thought that all went very well.
Well, I think Craig deserves a lot of credit for obviously building very strong relationships at the state. I thought as a participant in those meetings that they were very positive meetings. And obviously, we've got some work to do, but you know, the work that you and the team do to build those relationships, I think pays off when we need state investments in, in major projects like the wastewater plant and other things.
Thank you. Agreed.
And then Ann has an item as well.
Ann?
Yes, you may have checked your mail in the last week and noticed that your census was in there. So we're encouraging all Austin and all Moore County residents to fill out their census. Unfortunately, some of the promotional events that we've been trying to work on for the last year probably won't happen or will be delayed just because of the outbreak that's going on right now. But please share with your neighbors if you can within a six-foot space to, that they need to also fill out their census online. It's very easy. And you just enter that unique ID that was in the letter. So we just want to keep that conversation going amidst everything else that's going on right now.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, I don't really have anything, just that the city is, we're not gonna get caught by surprise on this. We're here for, for the citizens and if you're having issues and you don't know what to do, leave me a voice message, talk to your council. We're gonna get, we know for sure we're gonna get through this thing. So I hear next week there might be some toilet paper out at Walmart. Things are picking up. Otherwise, we need a motion to adjourn till Monday, April 20, April 6th at 2020, oh, I'm sorry, Corum, Corum. Did you have a statement? This is the last meeting. Whatever. I'm sorry. I'm not worrying about it anymore.
Corum. This is like, I think, my second to last, I think, meeting and...
You have more meetings?
Um, I guess the only thing I have to say is that I was actually really excited to be here, coming to the meeting. Just I think all that's happening around us during this time, I think we all look, look to our, I guess, our city leaders, our, you know, state leaders, our county leaders. So I was actually really excited to be here, to be able to, to hear, I guess, the guidance from the council and from, from all of you guys. So thank you. And yeah, I'm, I'm excited, I guess, for, to continue to learn more about city council and whether it's remotely or...
We don't know for sure.
We don't know yet, but that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, thank you. And you know, you're kind of are linked to the immigrant community. How are they taking all this, you know, that they, I mean, is there anything that you'd want to tell us?
Right now, well...
Where we can better serve them?
Well, this morning, my, at United Way, we spent most of our day trying to provide as many resources as we could, whether that was in English or, or Spanish, trying to provide a lot of language support to everybody around us, whether that is our partner organizations or just the community as a whole. I know that one of the things that we've been doing a lot is to be able to reach out to just everybody that could have sort of resources for not just like a certain group, but the whole community. So in terms of, I guess, the Hispanic community, I think we're all in the same boat right now, which is, I guess, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. But I think it's a time for all of us to be able to help each other during this time, whether, you know, you speak the language or you don't, whether you're of a different ethnicity or not. I think this is a time for all of us to be able to, to pitch in. I think I've seen, been seeing a lot of that. So our focus right now, and I think everybody's focus is to just be able to be a lending hand and support one another. So I think if we can continue to do that, we'll be okay.
Thank you for that. With that, does anybody else have anything?
I was gonna say before, but I just had to, the comment like about the COVID-19.
Come on up here, Obala. You gotta do it like, you know, this is how we do it. You can ask a question. You probably, okay, what would you, tell us your name and your address.
Oh, Obala Obala, address 1014 Streets Northwest, Austin, Minnesota. I just wanted to thank you, council, for all the work you guys here are doing. So I think, I just want to make a comment on the COVID-19. This is something is making the community panicking. And it's specific for the minority group. It's just something they don't know. I went to Walmart when I get done from work and everything is gone.
Yes.
I went Facebook Live and then I, I say it in my language, then in English. And then I'm like, thing is gone. If you have not done shopping, please come and grab something. So I was left with at least some water. I step away, it's gone. So people start calling me, so where do we go? I'm like, well, you go to gas station. We have a quick trip. We have some other places. But it had been something that not everyone expecting. So I just want to say for the whole council and all the leaders in the community, let's keep spreading the good news, like calming everyone down.
Is there enough resources, do you think? I mean, right now, what we need to do is get information. You know, what do we need to do? How can, how is it spread? How can we not get it? I mean, do you think there's enough resources getting the message out to the, I don't know, most of the kids out there are probably college people and stuff, but are they getting the message?
Yeah, I think what I've been using the most is the Facebook as a tool of communication. I just came back from Reva and I restarted the food pantry because a lot of students in class suspended. And I just telling people, if you need anything, I went shopping and then I met some of the students in my apartment. They're like, we did not get any TP. I'm like, hey, I have some here. We can share with you guys. So I gave it out and then I went to the college today and restarted the food pantry. I think it's something like, it will go down to the basic need and mostly. And, and when I was shopping, I see some elderly people that they don't get, people are rushing. So I just feel like if the Walmart will make some hours, like this is time for senior to do shopping only so that no, no one can run them down. Because I feel so bad, one of the lady, she was trying to get the water and then someone come already and get it. So she stand there and that was really, I feel bad for that because I feel like the city should come together and then give those people who are really vulnerable at this situation to help them out. Yeah, but the good, the, the good news is all of us are here. As you say, Mayor, we have to come together as a community and help one another, so.
And I've sat at several different meetings today where people have talked about doing food shelves or food baskets or, you know, providing food for them for the seniors, you know, because we know the seniors are gonna be our most stressed, stressed population right now. You know, maybe at some point it might expand to something else. But we're, people are certainly looking into that, including this, you know, some of the city's stuff, so.